Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Shaktikantadasji, Governor Reserve Bank of India, Harshpiti Singhania, President IMA and Vice Chairman and Managing Director JK Paper Limited, Sanjay Kiloskar, Convention Chairman and Chairman and Managing Director Kiloskar Brothers Limited, C K Ranganathan, Senior Vice President IMA and Chairman and Managing Director Cabin Care Private Limited, Srini Vas Dempo, Vice President IMA and Chairman Dempo Group of Companies. Ladies and gentlemen, it is a pleasure to have you with us for IMA's 48th National Management Convention and a very warm welcome in this celebration of Indian management. We are privileged to have Mr. Shaktikantadas, Governor Reserve Bank of India, to kick off this very special session at the convention. Mr. Das, many thanks for joining us on this special occasion and for agreeing to deliver the opening keynote of the convention. We are honoured to have you with us. Mr. Singhania, Mr. Ranganathan, Mr. Dempo, it is a pleasure to have all of you together in this session. Your outstanding leadership has enabled IMA to withstand the past year's disruption and become stronger through innovation. Thank you for joining us this afternoon. Mr. Kiloskar, always great to have you with us and many thanks for chairing the convention. An immediate past president of IMA, you remain engaged with the organisation and we deeply value your continued guidance and support. I am very pleased to welcome all the past presidents, IMA council members, fellow members of IMA, our friends from the media and all IMA members and delegates who have joined us today for the convention. We have put together some very interesting sessions and have some outstanding speakers addressing the convention over the next two days. We are also pleased to present the first ever virtual IMA Managing India Awards later this evening. Do remain tuned in for a star-studded lineup. Ladies and gentlemen, for nearly half a century, IMA's National Management Convention has been the preferred platform of India's leaders to discuss national challenges and to find a way forward. Once again, we have the cream of India's government thought leaders and industry leaders to discuss the most urgent issues being faced by the nation. However, the issues facing the country this year are unprecedented. Indian economy has been ravaged by the COVID pandemic and it needs more than just rebuilding. Rules of the game have changed in the economy as technology has become the centrepiece of every activity. New ways of work and life have taken root and it is simply not possible to roll back the clock and resume life as it was in the pre-COVID days. What we need to do differently and how we need to do it concerns everyone and that is the overarching theme during this summit. In this session, we are privileged to have the RBI governor with us to discuss the state of the economic rebuild and the policy measures required to make Indian economy more resilient. There are significant challenges to balancing a rapid recovery and maintaining stability of crisis and the financial system. Simultaneously, technology is accelerating changes in the form of money and ways of exchange. In this session, we will find answers to many of the questions we may have about the present and the future of the economy and the financial system. It is a perfect start to the convention before we take up other key facets of India's transformation. Once again, thank you everybody for joining us for the convention and I am sure you will enjoy all the sessions. With these words, it is my pleasure to invite the IMA president, Mr. Harshpiti Singhania, to deliver the welcome.
Thank you, Rekha. Sri Shaktikantadas, Governor Reserve Bank of India, Sri Sanjay Kiloskar, Convention Chairman and Past President, my colleagues, Mr. C K Ranganathan, Senior Vice President, Srini Vas Dempo, Vice President IMA, Rekha Sethi, past presidents of IMA, all our distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen. It is a pleasure to have you all with us today and a very warm welcome to everyone at IMA's 48th National Management Convention. We are privileged to open today's convention with the Governor of the Reserve Bank of India, Sri Shaktikantadas. Shaktikantji, we are delighted to have you with us in this celebration of Indian management and I am personally very grateful that you have accepted my invitation to share your thoughts on the role of the central bank in restoring and rebuilding Indian economy in this time of crisis. In the past too, you have been involved in shaping and implementing economic policies in your role as the Economic Affairs Secretary, Revenue Secretary, Fertiliser Secretary and as a member of the 15 Finance Commission. But I am sure this particular time would be the most unique one for you. Many thanks for joining us and a very warm welcome to you, Shaktikantji. I also welcome my IMA colleagues, Mr. Ranganathan, Mr. Dempo and Rekha, who have been a big help to me in steering IMA this year through a period of unprecedented disruption. A warm welcome to all of you. Sanjay, it is a pleasure to have you and many thanks for agreeing to chair this convention. As the immediate past president of IMA, you have remained engaged with the organisation's activities and it is very gratifying for everyone at IMA to have you involved in this year's NMC. A hearty welcome to all past presidents of IMA, the members, its council members and fellows and the many distinguished well-wishers who have logged in. My sincere thanks to our friends from the media who have always been very supportive of IMA. I also welcome those who are watching it live on our social channels. Ladies and gentlemen, the Indian economy has undergone a major upheaval during the COVID pandemic. But thanks to the outstanding efforts of the government and the RBI, which if I may add, perhaps has been one of the most responsive institutions we have had. The damage control has been, the damage control has been very controlled and a very quick recovery has been possible. The RBI has played a particularly important role in containing disruption of the economy and survival of many enterprises by instituting moratorium on local repayments and providing ample liquidity. RBI has tried to maintain the momentum of recovery by holding the interest rates low even in the face of high inflation. Its stance has been validated by the recent drop in inflation rate. RBI's role will continue to be central to India's economic recovery as the business and consumer confidence remain vulnerable and the possibility of further disruption cannot be ruled out entirely. In addition to the domestic issues, the RBI has also had to deal with the global movements and central bank policies. Rapid recovery of the economy in the rich world, both in terms of speed and quantum and growing concerns about rising inflation have triggered expectations of tapering of easy monetary policy in the US as well as in other places. If done suddenly, that can reverse foreign capital flows and destabilise the Indian rupee as had happened earlier in 2013. However, we can trust Mr. Das to prevent a repeat and ensure a smooth adjustment to any tapering of the stimulus in the US. It is very reassuring that the RBI governor has categorically stated that India is well-prepared to absorb any external shocks. Under your leadership sir, the RBI has used this period to work on important innovations such as official digital currency which is emerging as a global trend. Clearly, the RBI is alive to the changing nature of money in the digital age and is leading the change instead of reacting to it. Now, it is my pleasure to invite the convention chairman, Mr. Sanjay Kiloskar, to deliver his special address.
Thank you, Mr. Singhania. Sri Shaktikantadasji, Governor of the Reserve Bank of India, Mr. Singhania, Mr. Ranganathan, Mr. Dempo, Ms. Rekha Sethi, Director General, all past presidents of IMA, ladies and gentlemen. I am privileged to chair the 48th National Management Convention and it's really a great pleasure to be with all of you. It's a great honour for us to have Governor of the Reserve Bank of India open the IMA convention this year and it is as good as it can get to begin this convention with a keynote address by Sri Shaktikantadas. RBI has been the central figure in the rescue and rehabilitation of the economy during the COVID disruption and our apex bank also holds the key to setting the new rules for investment, production and consumption during the recovery and rebuilding phase. We have come a long way from the initial shock of COVID and lockdowns. Thanks to the RBI's helpful policies and actions, economic activity has revived considerably since the unlocking and the 20% GDP growth during the peak COVID period this year is a great achievement. The instant economic indicators such as freight and tax to July and August suggest a sustained recovery and barring a third COVID wave, we are hopeful, hopefully in for robust growth in the coming months. The RBI is understandably cautious and is holding its high liquidity and lower interest rate stance. As the anticipated third wave of COVID has not materialised so far and vaccinations have gained momentum, we see business and consumer confidence returning. Many people have come back to offices and bazaars are busier than they have been since March last year. But it is not yet a return to normalcy as we know it. So much has changed during the pandemic that it is not possible to go back to our life, work and business of the pre-COVID days. Having been forced to think and behave differently, we have discovered new ways of doing things and we are also doing things that we did not do earlier. Digitisation of business was already around but most enterprises shirked the transition. Remote work and distributed workplace were possible earlier but most business leaders held on to familiar habits and settled priorities. In less than two years, the world has changed for everyone and everyone has changed with it. Rules have been rewritten and they are still being written as we find our way through the disruption, uncertainty and complexity. Currently, most organisations are living day to day to avoid making decisions that would tie them to particular policies, projects, partnerships and people for long term. The long-drawn and still rampant crisis has made everything ad hoc. However, there is realisation that new competitive advantages have to be established with a switch to new ideas and investment in new capabilities. One of the biggest shifts has been in the area of supply chains. Just-in-time is not good enough anymore. Now, it must be combined with just-in-case. Initially, trouble came from disruption of economic activity and now worries about supply chains are coming from a surge in economic activity. It has become difficult to source inputs and distribute output because of logistic load jams around the world. The cost and time of shipping have escalated sharply. There is also a shortage of semiconductor chips that are required by nearly every product of the digital age. It has been a great sobering experience for enterprises to beginning to think in completely new ways. As this new rule of resilience applies not only to inventory but also to workforce, cash and technology. Everybody realises that things coming to a stop overnight is not a one-off. Digitisation has become critical to core competence and business strategy. Enterprises have learned that digitisation is not only the last resort during disruption but it is the key to competitiveness and growth. The new rule of business is not just to add online commerce and communication as a complementary layer but use digital technologies to create value for customers and improve organisational agility. However, it's important to remember that technology by itself cannot achieve anything. Technology makes a difference only when people up and down the hierarchy and across business ecosystems find it useful in their work. So, another new rule is that enterprises must synchronise strategy, product, people and technology instead of merely buying fancy new toys. Another big change is the high priority of employee and public health. Enterprises and brands have to be particularly mindful of health implications of their operations and their products. Most of these changes are self-reinforcing and as all get used to mixing the virtual with the physical, the duality of life and business will become pervasive in the post-vaccine economy. During the course of this convention, we will examine the emerging compulsions and openings and we will have an opportunity to listen to and learn from the best and brightest in our country. I am confident that everyone will enjoy each session. With these words, once again a warm welcome to our chief guest, the Honourable Governor of the Reserve Bank of India and the over 10,000 delegates who have logged on to the IMA platform and also the social media channels. I really hope all enjoy the convention as much as we have enjoyed putting it together. I now request Mr. Dempo, Vice President of IMA, to introduce our chief guest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kiloskar. Sri Shaktikantadasji, Honourable Governor, Reserve Bank of India, my colleagues in IMA, Mr. Harshpiti Singhania, Mr. C K Ranganathan, our past president, Mr. Sanjay Kiloskar, who is also the chairman of the convention, Rekha and dear friends. I deem it a unique privilege and an honour to introduce our chief guest and the keynote speaker of the convention's opening centre. A man I deeply admire and respect for his stellar contribution to building a robust financial system which has contributed positively to inclusive growth. A veteran of public governance and policymaking, he is a man at the centre of India's economic recovery and rebuilding efforts. Under his dynamic leadership, Reserve Bank of India has acted very quickly and decisively to provide relief to borrowers and liquidity not only to big but small businesses which has helped mitigate the devastating impact of the COVID pandemic and the lockdowns. An astute central banker is helping the government, the businesses and the consumers with supportive policies to drive a rapid rebound in the economic activity and our GDP growth. A man with nearly four decades of experience of governance in the areas of finance, taxation, industry and infrastructure, he understands the needs of all stakeholders in the economy and is adept at balancing the interests of the government and the private sector. A retired IS officer of the Tamil Nadu Caddo, he has had a long innings in the Finance Ministry under various regimes and also has been involved in the making of a record eight-union budgets. He has held important positions for the Government of India in the multilateral financial institutions which includes the likes of World Bank, Asian Development Bank, New Development Bank and Asian Infrastructure Investment Bank. Before being appointed as the 25th Governor of Reserve Bank of India, he was also a member of the 15th Finance Commission and India Sherpa in G20. A revolutionary central banker, he is making history by facilitating a financial and digital transformation of India. It is now my pleasure to invite our honourable chief guest and our keynote speaker of this opening and special session, Mr. Shaktikantadas, Governor Reserve Bank, to deliver his keynote address.
Namaskar. Sri Harshpiti Singhania, Sri Sanjay Kiloskar, Sri Srini Vas Dempo, for that very charitable and kind introduction, Sri C K Ranganathan, Ms. Rekha Sethi, all distinguished participants who are watching this event online, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to add that thank the president and all of the office bearers of the All India Management Association for having invited me to participate in this convention. It's a great opportunity for me and gives me a platform to share some of my thoughts with all of you and the participants. Now, this is a national management convention and it is appropriate and it is very apt that the IMA is organising it. In normal times and even more in times of severe stress, it is the quality of, it is the quality and capacity of management that makes the critical difference and enables businesses to not only survive but also to come out stronger. I am happy to note of management profession by collaborating with industry, government, academia and students. The theme of this convention beyond recovery, new rules of the game is indeed very well timed. After an 18-month-long battle, there are signs, and I repeat, signs, that the world is emerging from the shadow of coronavirus. And look beyond, this is the right time to step back a little and plan for an economy which is stronger, more inclusive and sustainable. I propose to highlight the contours of such an economy in my remarks today. COVID-19 is a watershed event in our era. It has caused widespread devastation of life and livelihood and it is still haunting the global economy in several ways. There are very few parallels of a shock like the COVID-19 in history which left policymakers with no template to navigate through the crisis. Both health systems and human endeavour to deal with the crisis were stretched to the limit. The pandemic is likely to leave indelible mark on the way economies and societies function. When we emerge from the crisis, it would most likely be a new dawn and a new normal. The pandemic has induced several structural changes which have significantly altered the way we work, live and organise ourselves, including our businesses. With greater shift to work from home, technology has gained potential to boost productivity by saving on travel time, boosting sales on online platforms and accelerating the pace of automation. As a result, consumption pattern is also changing and companies are resetting their supply chains both globally as well as locally. These changes will have wider ramifications for the economy in the days and years to come. Global supply chain is also undergoing significant shifts. Companies and various authorities have to be nimble enough to capitalise on these opportunities. Automation and robotics will threaten low-scaled workers and those in the contact-intensive sectors. The shift to online have also created new opportunities as well as challenges for employment-intensive sectors like travel, hotels, restaurants and recreation. Some of these changes are going to stay beyond the pandemic. These structural changes need to be kept in mind while formulating strategies for participative growth process. At another level, the pandemic has affected the poor and the vulnerable more, especially in emerging and developing economies. Daily wage earners, service and informal sector workers were badly hit in almost all emerging and developing economies. Their employment and income opportunities were curtailed. The lasting damage inflicted by the pandemic on these segments is of serious concern for inclusive growth. In the medium to long run, both efficiency and equity will greatly matter for sustainable growth and macroeconomic performance. Technology adoption, which was earlier limited to core sectors, has now permeated to several other sectors and these would include education, health, entertainment, retail trade and offices. The pandemic has also caused disruptions and induced reallocation of labour and capital within and across sectors. The firms which were quick to adopt technology and were flexible in working from off-site are attracting more capital and labour. On the other hand, firms which were not up for the challenge and competition will have to leave the space for the more dynamic ones. These forces of creative disruption, these forces of creative destruction are expected to boost productivity by encouraging greater competition, dynamism and innovation in several sectors of the economy. Now, let me now turn to the Indian scenario. In the post-pandemic world, India's prospects are underpinned by several dynamic sectors. I wish to briefly touch upon some of them and I have shortlisted about seven sectors which I propose to highlight. First, information technology services and information technology-enabled services, that is IT and ITES backed by entrepreneurial capabilities and innovation and innovative solutions have emerged as key strength of the Indian economy over the years. There is a growing league of unicorns in India reflecting its potential for technology-led growth. The country has added several unicorns over the last year to become the third-largest startup ecosystem in the world. Underpenetrated Indian markets and large IT talent pool provide an unprecedented growth opportunity for new-age firms. Further, the COVID pandemic has provided a new impetus to technology-driven companies such as fintech, edtech, health tech, which are likely to see increased funding activity in the coming years. The second point, the second sector that I would like to highlight is the India's digital momentum which is expected to continue with a strong demand in areas such as cloud computing, customer troubleshooting, data analytics, workplace transformation, supply chain automation, 5G modernisation and cyber security capabilities. India has the natural advantage to benefit from emerging trends in all these areas. The drive towards full fibreisation of the economy has to go hand-in-hand with establishment of data centres across the nation for data storage and processing. Ensuring universal, affordable and fast broadband internet access all through the country can certainly play a critical role in advancing productivity and employment opportunities. Further, the stronger push to digitalisation and automation can have spillover effects on ease of doing business. Medical advances and process accelerations can spark a renásá in public health innovations and delivery. E-commerce is emerging as another promising sector for India. It has benefited from the growing market, increased internet and smartphone penetration and COVID-induced shifts in consumer preferences. Various initiatives taken by the government, namely the Digital India, the Make In India, Startup India, Scale India and the Innovation Fund have created a conducive ecosystem for faster growth in the digital sector. Third, the pandemic has brought to focus what India can achieve in the area of manufacturing. In the pharmaceutical sectors, for the first time in history, vaccines were developed and administered within a year with India remaining a forerunner and global leader in vaccine manufacturing. Investors have shown confidence in the production-linked incentive that is PLI scheme introduced by the government. Following this initiative, India is now home to almost all the leading global mobile phone manufacturers and during the recent period, India has turned from being an importer to an exporter of mobile phones. This strength is likely to spill over to other sectors also. The presence of global players would help in enhancing India's share in the global value chain and building up a resilient supply chain network. Greater global chain, global chain value penetration that is, sorry, greater global value chain, that is greater GVC participation would also enhance competitiveness of India's large, micro, small and medium enterprise supplier base. Fourth, the global push towards green technology, though disruptive, can create new opportunities in several sectors. For example, the automobile sector is moving towards electric vehicles. With greater innovation, electric vehicles are now slowly converging into internal combustion engines in cost as well as performance. The biggest electric vehicle car maker, as all of you know, is not from the traditional carmaker companies. Similar creative disruption is also visible in the two-wheeler space. With supportive policies, greener technologies can yield economic and environmental benefits. Fifth, India's energy sector is also witnessing significant churning and technological transformation. As India grows rapidly, its energy demand is expected to pick up in the near future. Currently, a large part of our energy demand is made from fossil fuels with significant import dependence. India aims to increase the share of non-fossil fuels to forty percent, that is about four hundred fifty gigawatt of total electricity generation capacity by twenty thirty as part of the goals set under the Paris Agreement within the United Nations Framework Convention on Climate Change. With a view to give a boost to agriculture sector and to reduce environmental pollution, the government had launched the ethanol blended petrol program, which should help in cleaner air besides saving on fuel imports. The percentage of ethanol blending by oil marketing companies has risen from one point five percent in two thousand thirteen fourteen to five percent in two thousand nineteen twenty and is further expected to rise to eight point five percent in twenty one twenty-two, on course to achieve twenty percent target by twenty twenty-five. The drive towards renewable energy is a step in the right direction, both for energy security as well as environmental sustainability, which are critical for our long-term economic growth. Sixth, in the post-pandemic period, global trade will remain vital for faster recovery. Reflecting congenial policy environment and supportive external demand, India's exports have rebounded with a broad-based double-digit growth during the first half of this year, that is twenty-one twenty-two. India's exports of agricultural commodities, including geographical indications, that is G I certified products to newer destinations offer favorable, very favorable prospects for overall exports. Furthermore, exports of engineering goods, which account for around one-fourth of India's total exports, experienced robust growth across product categories and newer markets. To further strengthen the export potential, there is a need to enhance the share of high-tech engineering exports to achieve an ambitious engineering export target of US dollar two hundred billion by twenty thirty. To achieve our objectives in all these areas which I have outlined so far, we need a big push to infrastructure, particularly in areas of health, education, low-carbon and digital economy in addition to transport and communication. In addition, the warehousing and supply chain infrastructure will be critical to bolster value addition and productivity in the agriculture and horticulture sector. This will create employment opportunities in semi-urban and rural areas and promote inclusive growth. The demand for warehousing infrastructure has also gone up in tier-two and tier-three cities in the wake of steep jump in online trading. Moreover, investment in intangible capital such as research and development and skill upgradation of human resource has strong positive impact on productivity. Some empirical evidence suggests that the impact of investment in intangible capital on labor productivity is more than investment in tangible capital. Seventh, a dynamic and resilient financial system is at the root of a stronger economy. India's financial system has transformed rapidly to support the growing needs of the economy. While banks have been the primary channels of credit in the economy, recent trends suggest increasing role of non-banking, non-bank funding channels. Assets of non-bank financial intermediaries like N B L Cs and mutual funds have been growing. Funding through market instruments like corporate bonds has also been increasing. This is a sign of a steadily maturing financial system, moving from a bank-dominated financial system to a hybrid one. Substantial progress has been made to fortify the internal defense mechanism of financial institutions to identify, measure and mitigate the risks. This is a continuing process and efforts by all stakeholders will have to be sustained. History shows, now let me just also, before I conclude, touch upon the efforts towards inclusive and sustainable economy. History shows that impact of pandemics unlike financial and banking crisis could be a lot more asymmetrical by affecting the vulnerable segments much more than others. The Covid nineteen pandemic is no exception. Within countries' contact-intensive service sectors, employing large number of informal, low-skilled and low-wage workers have been hit harder. In several emerging and developing economies, lack of healthcare access has disproportionately affected the family budget of the poor. Even education, which was provided online during the pandemic, excluded the low-income households due to lack of requisite skills and resources. Overall, there are evidences across countries that the pandemic may have severely dented inclusivity. The global recovery has also been uneven across countries and sectors. It has been uneven across countries and across sectors. Advanced economies have normalized faster on the back of higher pace of vaccination and larger policy support. Emerging and developing economies are lagging due to slow access to vaccine and binding constraints on policy support. Multilateralism will lose credibility if it fails to ensure equitable access to vaccine across countries. If we can secure the health and immunity of the poor, we would have made a great leap towards inclusive growth. Global cooperation remains vital for rapid progress on this front. Needless to add, that inclusive growth in the post-pandemic world will require cooperation and participation of all stakeholders. In India, collaborative effort of various stakeholders is helping accomplish a seemingly difficult task of accelerating the pace of vaccination. The private sector is developing and manufacturing the vaccines. The union government is centrally procuring and supplying it. And the state governments are delivering and administering it in every nook and corner of the country. India is now administering a record of about one crore doses of vaccine every day across all segments of the population. A major challenge to inclusiveness in the post-pandemic world would come from the flip to automation provided by the pandemic itself. Greater automation would lead to overall productivity gain, but it may also lead to slack in the labor market. Such a scenario calls for a significant skilling or training of our workforce. We also need to guard against any emergence of digital divide as digitization gains speed after the pandemic. Further, the need for professional human resources trained in science, technology, engineering and mathematics, that is STEM, is also rising briskly. Major technology-based firms have expressed their intention to hire many new professionals with skills in these areas. In the short term, the supply of such workforce cannot be increased by the traditional education system. And thus, there is a need for close involvement of corporates in the design and implementation of courses suitable to the changing industrial landscape. As we recover, we must deal with the legacies of the crisis and create conditions for strong, inclusive and sustainable growth. Limiting the damage that the crisis inflicted was just the first step. Our endeavor should be to ensure durable and sustainable growth in the post-pandemic future. Restoring durability of private consumption, which has remained historically the mainstay of aggregate demand, will be very crucial going forward. More importantly, sustainable growth should entail building on macro fundamentals via medium-term investments, sound financial systems and structural reforms. Towards this objective, a big push to investment in healthcare, education, innovation, physical and digital infrastructure will be required. We should also continue with further reforms in labor and product markets to encourage competition and dynamism and to benefit from the pandemic-induced opportunities. The production-linked incentive scheme, and this is very important, the production-linked incentive scheme, that is the P L I scheme announced by the government for certain sectors, is an important initiative to boost manufacturing, to give a boost to the manufacturing sector. It is necessary that the sectors and the companies, I repeat, it is necessary that the sectors and companies which benefit from this P L I scheme utilize this opportunity to further improve their efficiency and competitiveness. In other words, the gains from the P L I scheme should be durable and not one-off. And the responsibility for ensuring this lies with the industry, lies with the sectors and lies with the companies which are benefiting from the P L I scheme. Again, for growth to be sustainable, a transition towards a greener future will remain critical. The need for clean and efficient energy systems, disaster-resistant infrastructure and environmental sustainability cannot be overemphasized. Due considerations should be given to individual country roadmaps, keeping in mind country-specific features and their stage of development while adopting policies towards climate resilience. Let me now conclude, it's been, I think, a bit longer than I had intended it to be, but let me now conclude. On the whole, while the pandemic has created enormous challenges, it can also act as an inflection point to alter the course of development. Enhanced adoption of technology will give impetus to productivity, growth and income. Leveraging technology in implementing government schemes, training and skill development programs for the unemployed, promoting women-friendly work atmosphere and supporting the education of the poor and the marginalized sections would be the areas of focus as we embark on our journey beyond Covid nineteen. Income and job creation with digitalization and innovation can bring about a new age of prosperity for a large number of people. Many of us have grown up reading Mahatma Gandhi's Talisman in textbooks. And I quote, "I will give you a talisman. Whenever you are in doubt, recall the face of the poorest and the weakest man whom you may have seen and ask yourself if the state you contemplate is going to be of any use to him. Will it gain, will he gain anything by it? Will it restore him to a control over his own life?" Unquote. As we strive to build a stronger and resilient India, this pearl of wisdom that we learned long ago remains as relevant even today. Thank you. Stay safe. Namaskar.
Many thanks, Shaktikanta Jee. That was a brilliant presentation. Thank you so much again for joining us. May I now request Mr. S K Ranganathan to deliver the vote of thanks?
Thanks, sir. Sri Shaktikanta Das Jee, Governor Reserve Bank of India, Ashpati Singhania, President IMA, Sanjay Kirlovskar, Convention Chairman and Past President IMA, Srinivas Dempo, Vice Chairman, Vice President IMA, Rekha Sethi, Director General IMA, ladies and gentlemen. It's a pleasure to be with you in the National Management Convention and it's my privilege to conclude with special inaugural session with the R B A Governor, Sri Shaktikanta Das. Sir, thank you very much for a truly outstanding address. It was fascinating to hear from you on all the aspects that the R B A and the government have taken and what needs to be done to help the economy recover and for a greater transformation. Also, thank you for highlighting as to how various sectors will evolve and what we must do to embrace the opportunities. I must say that under your regime, through various policy initiatives, you have made Indian banks and the financial sectors much stronger than ever before. Thank you very much, sir. My compliments to you on leading the central bank through unprecedented trials and tribulations and ensuring stability through very effective interventions and innovations. Your steps to provide quick and plentiful liquidity in the financial system has prevented a catastrophe. And your message to protect borrowers during the lockdown, your measures, various measures to protect the borrowers during the lockdown have enabled businesses to survive and recover after unlocking. Your interest rate management has been extremely pragmatic. I'm sure all will vouch. This kind of an interest rate Indian industry has never witnessed. And thank you for the push, all the things that you have done. The government, also for deepening the government bond market is very welcome. The rebound in business and business sentiment has been particularly good over the last couple of months. The demand situation is improving, especially in the rural areas because of a good monsoon season, which has made the farming economy more optimistic. Manufacturing is coming back to the pre-Covid levels and the shrinkage in the survey sector is beginning to ease up. However, the festive season will be critical, both on account of consumer spending and decontainment of Covid. Even as the economic activity resumes and grows, the central bank's support remains crucial to business. There are still kinks in the economy and the recovery is uneven across sectors. Though the business and consumer confidence have improved in absence of expected third wave of Covid, R B A is doing the right thing by continuing its supportive policies. At the same time, R B A is moved to keep Indian financial system in sync with the digitization of the economy are welcome. One is looking forward to the introduction of India's e-currency and further shift of payments and transfers to digital modes. Sir, many thanks for opening the convention and for sharing your thoughts on the policy environment for economic recovery and rebuilding. It has been a pleasure listening to you. A special thanks to all my friends from the media. We count on you to take IMA's message further. I'd also like to thank everyone in the audience for joining us for the convention and for helping us advance the cause of Indian management. Thank you.